It's working. There's a volume. It is. Yeah, sounds good.
You just can't, you just can't.
I just will be very careful with it. Alright.
You can't actually speak for you.
Yeah.
It'll make for a shorter meeting. It's cholera.
Okay, cholera, man. I'm a little clerk.
Seaberton?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kiper?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Kooz?
Here.
Could you please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's down to a public hearing, a resolution seventeen twenty-six seventy-two, meaning the two thousand seventeen general government operating capital budget to provide for supplemental appropriations for the library department for one thousand two hundred, fire department for fifty-three thousand four sixty, and public works department, street division thirty thousand five oh two. Is anybody here to speak to that? See, and then we'll close that public hearing, bring us down to communications. We do have one thing on there to add a item to the agenda, which is the use of the civic center by FEMA. They wanted to be able to do it for free for that day. I'm gonna put it under consent agenda. If we want to talk about it, we can pull it. I don't know what the mood of the council will be on that, but we'll put it under consent and go from there. That brings us to persons to be heard, and Kathleen, here first. Must be blueberry time.
She's not dressed like one, so.
I'm not dressed like a blueberry. My name is Kathleen Light. I am the director of the Arts Council. I live at four-ten Cedar Lower and haven't been here for a while, so it's nice to see all of you. I did come to talk about blueberry, but I also wanted to give you a little bit of information about what we've been up to in the past couple of months. We had the Invitational Ketchikan Artist Exhibits up at the Main Street Gallery for June and July. About twenty-three artists were being shown. I'm mentioning it because we thought it was interesting. Yet last year was our first year. We had about thirteen-hundred people come through in those two months. This year was only a thousand, so it didn't even feel like that many. But this year was, so the number dropped, and I don't know if that is the weather, which it could be, because today, for this week, we have had insane numbers in the gallery. So it could very well have been the weather, but I think that was an interesting, fun fact. So, on to blueberry. First of all, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank the manager's office, the police department, the fire department, the streets, public works, the electrical department of KPU. Everybody in the city has done just an awesome, awesome job helping to make this festival happen. And I don't think the community realizes how much work you guys put in, how much work the city departments put in, and it's just awesome that you guys do that to help make this festival so special for our community. So, for the Blueberry Arts Festival, it is, it's a three-day event. As you know, it starts tomorrow with the Blueberry Pet and Doll Parade. I hope all of you can make a viewing of that. That should be pretty spectacular this year, based on the sunshine. Of course, the Blueberry Dish Contest is tomorrow. The art exhibit opens. We have had extraordinary participation in the Blueberry Arts Festival art exhibit this year. We have about fifty artists. They can put up to two works each, and many of them have put in two pieces. So the gallery is like, everything is very close together. It's chock full, and it's really, really wonderful artwork. So I hope you can make a visit to the gallery this month and see all of that hard work. We have, have had tons of response for booth, booth holders this year. We are up to one-fifty. People are dropping, and then more people are wanting to be in, and so it's kind of a moving target still, even this afternoon. So we hope that we end up at, we'll see. We'll see what happens on Saturday. But it's been pretty cool, and so I think we're gonna have a really big Blueberry Arts Festival, and I think the community's ready for some sunshine, a whole celebration of each other. We have about seventy volunteers that it takes to make the Blueberry Festival happen. The four of us can't pull all of this off over the three days. So we have tons of volunteers to help make it happen, and we couldn't do without them. The Giggle Feet Dance Festival also happens during this weekend. It's Friday and Sunday nights at seven-thirty at K-HI. This is the one chance in Ketchikan where adults and community members can dance on a fully staged, for a fully staged performance, which means they have lights, they have staging of any sort. It's a full stage, they get a dance floor. This is an extraordinary opportunity that our community provides for our dancers. So we have twenty-two separate dances that happen. That's about seventy dancers, plus all the choreographers that put those together. So it's a pretty big deal. And that's it for blueberry. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Kathleen? Thank you, Kathleen, for starting us off.
Thank you.
One thing I forgot to remind everybody, we have a long list of people who want to speak today, so try to be concise. And next up is Reed Harrington, or Harding, excuse me.
My name is Reed Harding. I live on one-twenty-one Nedu Street, and I work for the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition as the drug community coordinator. Members of the City Council, I'm talking to you out of concern for the health of our community, members in respect for the law. Currently, we're faced with a proposal that would promote secondhand smoking indoors, and I'd like to set the record straight about that. I believe the facts speak for themselves in this matter, and I'd like you to consider what I must say for the health of our community. First, I would like everyone to consider the law. According to Alaska statute seventeen dot thirty-eight dot zero-four-zero, it's unlawful to consume marijuana in public. If a change to law is needed, I would suggest that parties interested get their required signatures and submit it to legislature for review. According to Alaska Smoking Law eighteen dot thirty-five three hundred, smoking in any form is a nuisance and a public health hazard. Furthermore, according to the discussion posted on alaska.gov, if a person in charge designates a smoking area, he or she must protect your health by ensuring that you're not exposed to secondhand smoke. If this cannot be achieved by separation, partition, or ventilation, then the area must remain non-smoking. As I stated in my last testimony, the Surgeon General has made it clear that ventilation and other related systems cannot mitigate this health concern. The American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers confirmed this by saying, no other engineering approaches, including current and advanced air dilution, ventilation, or air cleaning technologies, have been demonstrated or should be relied upon to control health risks from environmental smoke exposure in spaces where smoking occurs. This is because the very fine particles that are created by combustible materials are not affected by air currents the way smoke particles are, that you actually can see. Even in the best vented room imaginable, your risk for cancer and lung disease still increases. The issue is, the issue of difference between tobacco smoke and marijuana smoke has been raised many times, and rest assured, smoke is smoke. It is not good for you, and in fact, according to the American Lung Association, marijuana smokers tend to inhale more deeply and hold their breath longer than cigarette smokers, which leads to a greater exposure per breath to tar. Secondhand marijuana smoke contains many of the same toxins and carcinogens found directly inhaled marijuana smoke in similar amounts, if not more. Smoking marijuana clearly damages the human lung. Research shows smoking marijuana causes bronchitis, and marijuana smoke has been shown to injure the cell lines of the large airways, which could explain why smoking marijuana leads to symptoms such as a chronic cough, phlegm production, wheezes, and acute bronchitis. Whether it is less or more harmful than tobacco remains to be seen, but clearly, it's not healthy in the least. The cost of cleaning the environment that has been exposed to extended periods of secondhand smoke is staggering. Companies that specialize in cleaning up after secondhand smoke report additional costs as high as ten thousand dollars per apartment building in order to rectify the smell and residue left behind. This is something else to consider when allowing smoking indoors. These costs will eventually be passed to future business owners tasked with cleaning up the mess previous business owners have created. Let me also assure everyone that there is no construction technique to seal off a building to others that are joining it. This is impossible, because all buildings need to breathe, otherwise we would all asphyxiate in our own homes. Knowing this, we should reject the concept there is something preventing smoke from traveling from building to building. Many of the buildings in our town have apartments attached to them as well. Allowing secondhand smoking indoors would be putting their occupants' health at risk. As I've said, I think the facts about secondhand smoke are both accurate and compelling. There is no sane justification for allowing smoking indoors. We've come a long ways as a society, and now finally, those who choose to smoke step outside. It has become the expectation that people do not smoke indoors, or where it will affect others. The new golden rule of smoking is important and is enshrined in the respect for other people's health. Simply put, don't make your habit my problem. Please reject the premise that we now need to step back inside to smoke. It is both wrong and destructive to what we've worked so hard to accomplish. Thank you guys for your time, and I appreciate you listening to me.
Any questions? Any questions for Reed? Thank you, sir. That brings us to Jody.
Good evening. Oh, sorry, I'm a little shorter than that guy. Hi, my name is Joey Telson, and I am a resident of Alaska, and I am one of the first Uber drivers. Myself and Chris Comstock were certified at the same time. The reason I'm coming forth is because we need options for transportation in this town. We need options that are affordable for our community. We also need economic growth. We also need to have our needs met, not just technologically, but also financially. So when we have people that are working two and three jobs, which I've been doing that for approximately seven years now, and then I'm enrolled in college full-time and taking my child places or whatnot, because she's fourteen and is very expensive, the idea of squeezing in some time to give folks a ride to where they need to go at an affordable price is ideal. So, for instance, I gave folks a ride home a couple weeks ago from the VFW, from a memorial service to Cloverview. There were four of them in that car. It only costed them thirty-one dollars, and they told me that it normally costs them sixty-five dollars to go home, and they were happy as can be. And of course, I'm a very friendly person, I'm very personable, and I enjoy people. I'm safe. My car has been certified and not by some hokey backdoor garage person. I actually had to go to a licensed auto shop, have it certified. I had to provide proof of insurance. They did do a background check on me, and I am willing to pay my quarterly taxes that are necessary. I have owned a business since two thousand. I've been a property manager. I also have ran a cleaning business up until last year. I've paid quarterly taxes in Juneau when I was doing my business there. And I am willing to do that, because we need to have options, and we need to get with today's technology. We need to move forward in the future, and most of all, we need it to be affordable, because we are in a town that, you know, everything's going up but our paychecks. And primarily, that's what I wanted to say today, and I hope you will consider that when you make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, that brings us to Martha Thomas.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi. So my name is Martha Thomas. I own Alaska Discount Tours, and I have a booth in the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau. I've been in business for over ten years, and I've seen plenty of changes that happen. I'm a local resident, and I have children in school. Between my husband and I, we hire over twenty-seven employees. I'm against Uber. And the reason I'm against Uber, if Uber comes into this town, and those that we employ may be in jeopardy. You can catch an Uber for twenty dollars, or you can take a local tour for forty-plus dollars, right? And we are local taxpayers. Again, I have twenty-plus employees. Uber can move people at a fraction of the cost with no commercial insurance, no workman's comp, unemployment insurance, no accountants, et cetera. There's no high cost of doing business to be an Uber driver. I've seen everyday people on, that steer customer towards cruise ship tours, not local tours. So I'm in competition with even our local government sometimes. So it's hard to be an employee and have a local business and try to fight for those tours and those people, and then if you bring Uber in, then that's that much more fighting that we have to do. I have taken Uber myself one time in Sea-Tac. I took a Sea-Tac taxi camp, taxi, Sea-Tac. I took a local taxi. He has to pay the city and the ports of Seattle fifteen dollars for his taxi to pick me up. Then when you take the Uber guide, the Uber guide does not have to pay the port tax. So what happens in the city of Sea-Tac now is, they become a city, correct? So now they're, they're local, what do you call that? It's fifteen dollars an hour that they pay for local people, right? Minimum wage is fifteen dollars an hour. You cannot afford, and I cannot afford, fifteen dollars an hour to pay minimum wage. So Uber will drive out myself and twenty-one of my employees, your local taxpayers, along with, along with my kids and the schools that we provide for. And I believe in our economy, and I like these people, and I think you guys should believe in local business, not just an Uber driver or somebody coming in and taking away local business. Any questions?
Any questions for Martha?
Any questions?
See you then. Thank you, Martha.
Hey, thanks.
Joey?
Yes?
Come on up.
I'm Joey.
Oh. This is Bill? Oh, that's Joey.
Yeah, he said Joey.
Joey.
I thought so.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I think for responsibility.
I apologize. Well, thank you for hearing my voice. My name's Jody Lynn Hutton, and I live at twenty-four oh one Fourth Avenue. I have been in Alaska for fifty years, around southeast since the eighties, working in the float camps and two seasons out with Sarah. I've spent some winters here, and recently in Washington, I worked on the Washington State ferries until my mother passed. And the reason I'm giving you this background is I am opposing the Uber entrance here in Ketchikan. I've been trained for Homeland Security. I carry a Merchant Seaman holder card and a past member of the IBU. So with that training and the experiences I've had personally with an impact that this could bring to this community, I'm pleading my case with you. By inviting Uber to Ketchikan, you are inviting unhealthy impact to this island. Already common knowledge, diamond stores are contacts for synthetic drugs that have proven fatal. What may have begun as an encouraged revenue with cruise ship industry to supplement our failed economy based with the timber and fishing industry here, it's kind of a remedy into kind of a, I view it as a hostile takeover, because I've experienced that in Washington. While in the beginning encouraging local taxpayers great revenue opportunities has become policy tactics of Princess Tours to not only discourage passengers from booking with local tours and not shop at local businesses, but I've had feedback from passengers that they are using actual fear tactics to prompt them to pay more and book only with a cruise line. Actually, I had a female passenger who went into a meltdown with anxiety about her all aboard time. She was very upset, and I've never missed or been late for anybody. How exactly does that support our local community through winter and still non-livable sustaining wage? By allowing Uber into this community will not only take even more revenue and jobs from tour businesses, but entire communities' limited housing markets skyrocket even more as they migrate more and more of family and friends to live and work and thrive here, eventually populated by mass immigration to have majority voters in every seat and office. Hear my voice and close not only this door of opportunity of takeover, but unite to recover what once was a healthy, balanced, thriving economy of hard-working families. Fight to bring back timber and fishing economy, which we regulated just fine without government before. For the future of our children and grandchildren, allow ships in on a smaller scale and implement or increase dock security with police presence and dock safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry about the confusion on names. Terrence.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Terrence Robbins with Southeast Prevention Services, thirty-seven-ten B Hillside Road. For those of you that missed it, I gave a little speech last meeting, so I won't go, for the sake of the ones who've already heard it, I won't go into so much detail. I just kind of wanted to bring up a few points. Reed mentioned that, you know, the golden rule for smoking is to take it outside and stuff like that. Legislatively, the state of Alaska is very close to passing a statewide smoke-free law, which will require, require you to take it outside to smoke. You won't be able to smoke inside anywhere, except for on a fishing boat or some other exceptions like cigar bars and things like that. So that has one more committee to pass and get voted on by the House, and then it would go to the governor's desk for signature. I want to talk about the medical benefits of marijuana. There are none that have been proven through, as far as the FDA is concerned. So, while I understand that some people do benefit from the CBD oils and things like that, I don't, I don't think that you guys are selling CBD oils at this point, because they have to, they would have to be approved through the state and shipped down here and stuff like that. So, they're just, they're just a recreational dispensary. That's what they are. It's just for recreational marijuana. They're not a medical dispensary. Your resolution would endorse, if you guys choose to do so, would endorse a regulation that hasn't been developed or finalized and put out for public comment. You'd basically be encouraging the Marijuana Control Board to try and change the law, which passed but prohibited onsite consumption of marijuana, and it has a hundred-dollar fine. So there, the Marijuana Control Board is controlled now by three appointed marijuana industry representatives, one public health representative and one public safety representative. So the vote's three to two every time for the industry. It's a, you know, thank Governor Walker for that. So just, just keep in mind that these guys have failed in this attempt three times already to allow onsite consumption statewide. They're, they're now attempting for the fourth time to do it. At the last meeting, I brought a stack of paper that was over an inch thick. That was all of the public comments from two of the meetings that were submitted by the American Lung Association, American Heart Association, things like that, people like that, and supporters of onsite consumption. And the ratio was seventy groups against onsite consumption, twenty individuals or marijuana industry representatives in support of it. And the key distinction I'd like to point out is that the people who were against it cited why. They cited ASHRA reports. They cited American Lung Association data, surveys, you know, studies that have been done in universities on the dangers of marijuana consumption and secondhand smoke and thirdhand smoke and things like that. So, just weigh, I just don't think we should weigh based on these two-hundred people commented on a Facebook page versus the people that were afraid to comment on your Facebook page, because we would get slaughtered. So anyway, I just wanted to point those things out. I've provided for you a copy of my, my handout from last time. So you know where I stand, you know how I feel, and I thank you for my time, for your time.
Hey, thanks a lot, Terrence. Next, Paul, I think it's Hood?
Good evening. My name is Paul Hook. I live at twenty-seven-twenty-nine Congress Avenue. I sent a letter to the City Council Mayor's, and then I emailed it. And so I would just like to read it so that I did not bring copies for the audience members, because that's a waste of paper and any. So, to your City Council members and Mayor Williams, I'm writing in regard to agenda item number resolution one-seven-two-six-seven-oh for the Thursday, August third, two thousand seventeen meeting. I feel it's important that the elected City Council members do not request the State of Alaska Control Board adopt regulations allowing for onsite consumption of marijuana or approving designated areas for onsite consumption in the licensed retail marijuana establishments. While measure two specifically states it will ban public use of marijuana, it does not differentiate between smoking and the consumption of edibles. I'm requesting this as a concerned citizen of the city of Alaska, of the city of Ketchikan. If the people of Alaska wanted public consumption of marijuana, they should have written it in the original law. I feel if our elected officials should uphold state law and not lobby behalf on a private business enterprise that knew the law going in. And since I wrote this letter, I found out, and you know, this town runs on rumor and innuendo, that Stony Moose has already constructed the lounge. And so, to me, that's even more important, that they would go and start an illegal business and then expect you to legitimize it. I mean, if we don't wait until we have a law to start an enterprise, to me, that just shows how illegitimate that is. And I know some people will say, where I work, I'm a state-certified chemical dependency counselor. I work at Gateway. But this has absolutely nothing to do with what I do for a living. This has to do with us upholding the law. And when we stop upholding the law, then we have anarchy. So I really appreciate your no vote, and like Reed said, if they want it, get the signatures, put it on the ballot, and let us vote on that. Because rest assured, if it would have said public consumption, it wouldn't have passed, because we don't want people smoking. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Paul? Thank you, sir. Zach? Zach, how do you spell your last name?
Bowles, B-O-L-E-S.
We're gonna talk about your penmanship.
Yeah, it's a little rough, so.
I got Zach Bolo. I got Zach Bolo.
I write fast. I'm a busy guy.
Go ahead.
Anyways, Zach Bowles, Alaska and Sour Dough Cab, Honorable Mayor and respected council members. Three things, and then I'll be kind of quick. I'd like to announce that starting Saturday, the brand-new ADA-accessible cabs will be on the road and in service. So that's exciting. Thank you for all your hard work on that, and we're excited to provide that service with the wheelchair-equipped vehicles. The second thing is, of course, I'm not in favor of Uber, so I would love you guys to support putting this on the ballot. People, I think, need to understand that that's exactly what this is. Right now, the state law has said that they can operate. By putting this on the ballot puts it to a public vote for us to decide if we do or do not want it. So with that being said, I urge you to put it on the ballot. Let people figure out what they want in their community and go from there. I'd also like to mention that getting anywhere on the island, one way is thirty-five dollars flat rate in a cab. We charter that. So sixty, I don't know what happened there unless it was a tip. But anywhere you go on the island, one way is thirty-five dollars for a half-hour. That'll take you from downtown all the way out to Salmon Falls if you want to. Up to six. Because we all run Dodge Caravans, so you can haul up to six people at one time. The third thing is, is I'm on your consent agenda tonight to merge Alaska and Sour Dough Cab into one company. So we're looking for your support on that. Nobody's, we're not changing anything. We're going to run the same amount of permits we always had. It'll be the five from Alaska merging into the nine at Sour Dough, giving us the same fourteen cars. The purpose for doing this is, once we've won the wheelchair-accessible cabs and we got those two cars plus the two additional permits, that made Sour Dough Cab a thirteen-cab operating company. And what that means for public safety is, I want to hire a dispatcher and have a central dispatch station because right now, cabs are radio dispatched out of the car. By merging the companies together, what it'll do is it'll put me under one heading and one name, and it'll allow me to have the extra five cars to help offset the cost of the dispatcher and make driving cabs safer for the customers, for the driver, and everybody else. And that's one of our main purposes for doing that. So I'll hang around, and if you guys have any questions when that comes up, feel free to ask. If you have any questions now, I will.
Any questions, Dick?
Yeah, Zach, are the handicap cabs going to be side-loading or back-loading?
They are side-loading.
Any other questions for Zach? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Lance H.
I'm Lance Ho, which is Washington Street. I'm here just to support Reed and Paul on that onsite consumption. I'm against that as a recovering addict. I think it's a bad idea. We have a town that's struggling with addiction and alcoholism, and it's just giving them more ways to go high, get high, and then leave there and get drunk at a bar. And it's just worse. You're getting marijuana and alcohol at the same time driving a car. It's just not a good idea. It's dangerous. Being a recovering addict, I know that people will do that. They'll go out and get stoned, and then they'll drive a car, and get a beer if they're thirsty because you get your cotton mouth, you know? And so it's just, it's not a good idea. It's just, I don't think so. That's all.
Thank you very much. Steve McDonald.
Keep my hat on. Keep the glare off, you guys.
Thank you.
Steve McDonald, 716 Brierd. Good evening. I'll try to make it short. I'm not going to speak about marijuana. I don't use it, so I got nothing to say. What I'm interested in getting a point to you guys is the serious concern I have about Uber because when I was down in New Orleans last year, I got off the jet and we went outside and Uber cars were pulling in seven, eight times faster than the cabs were, and the cabs were all lined up. It's kind of like a semi-death sentence maybe for some of the local operations. But my main concern out of all this, and nobody's addressed it, is if you get thirty, forty, fifty Ubers in town and people are coming to town and they say they can't do a tour, but they want a ride to Harren Cove and then they want to get picked up at Harren Cove, it's the same thing because of the cell phone and the infrastructure that would go on. But the safety issue, where are we going to put another thirty, forty, fifty, potentially roughly Uber drivers coming on and off the port? Dick Coos would probably agree with that. I mean, you know, the side parking areas, we got a couple downtown. There's nothing at berth four, and that's going to be developed eventually. And then you have the little tiny access there in the roundabout. You got the shuttles. You got the businesses that are already operating on the port. I see it more as a safety concern for the tourists. We've had a, you know, fairly good run here in Ketchikan for thirty years. I've been in operation, knock on fake wood. I've never had any serious accidents or anything. It's because I work hard with my mechanics and stuff to make sure that. But that's a different story. But I'm just worried about the lack of infrastructure actually on or next to the port because they would come in and try to pick people up, and where are they going to meet? And then they're going to stop if there's no room to slide in, which happens down by the mining company on the south side, yeah, south side of the visitor center. People, I've seen people pick up their friends. I've seen other businesses do it. They stop on the street. They load them up. They go. It has the serious potential, I think, to be a total circus because anybody that's been on berth three in the afternoon and seen twenty-five hundred people come off the ship in forty-five to fifty-five minutes, you'll understand what I'm talking about. Any questions?
Any questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Deborah Hayden. Anne McKinn. Yeah. Either one. Take your time.
If I'm going to come to these, I have to set up a ride in advance.
There you go.
They're waiting for it. It's okay. Deborah Hayden, 11011, Pittsburgh, Georgia. I've already written you an email about the lounges for marijuana ingestion. So you've already seen that. I have very little to add, except that one thing that will be coming up is that the cruise ship passengers need a place to go ingest their marijuana, and that's one of the reasons for these public places. And they're walking. And my argument was that people will drive when they're intoxicated with marijuana and be unsafe. But, and the argument would be that the majority of people using these pot lounges will be walking. Well, but then it becomes winter, and the cruise ship passengers are gone, and it's snowing. And we're left with me walking on the North Tectongas Walkway where they don't plow the walkway, and I have to walk on the highway because you can't walk on the walkway in the dark. And although I wear lights, I'm still terrified that some drunk driver is going to come along and hit me. And now we have a whole nother layer of people intoxicated with marijuana because they had to drive to this public ingestion place and ingest their marijuana. And then now they're going to drive home and probably hit me on the road and anybody else who happens to be walking on that road. So we have more winter months than we have summer months, and so the danger is multiplied. Also, we do have the situation where people do drink alcohol and ingest marijuana. They go bar hopping in the public places. And then if they have a public place where they can ingest marijuana, they go do that too. It's been shown that that happens. And I gave you one study, but I've seen some others that show that once you ingest alcohol, it vastly increases the intensity of the THC in the marijuana. So you're like two or three times more intoxicated if you combine the two. So if you then get in the car and drive, you're vastly more impaired than it would be if it was just one of those substances. Frequently, the argument in favor of marijuana is, oh, well, it's not as harmful as alcohol. It's like it's one or the other. But now it's being combined. It's both. So not always, but the possibility is very high that that will happen. So I urge you, I'll give you three words. Don't do it.
Thank you very much, Deborah. Anne, you're up.
Hi, I'm Anne McKinn at 258 Hennington Street. And you've heard a lot of information regarding the pot lounges. And I hadn't really given it a whole lot of thought until Julie had posted it on Facebook and said, what do you think? And I really appreciated that because it forced me to deal with the issue. And some of the reasons that she kind of cited were, I'm kind of on the emotional side, you know, the elderly couple who came into town and she was needing, wanting to smoke a joint to help her with her pain. And that tugged at my emotional strings as well. And I thought, well, okay. Then I was challenged by somebody else, but what about all this other? So I just started doing a lot of reading, a lot of researching, and even looking back on my own personal experience, my own family. My brother last year committed suicide. My brother lived a life of marijuana and alcohol all his life. He was an incredible man, a businessman, a chef, just incredibly artistic. But yet he could never get past a certain point. And it just breaks my heart that I've just seen a man kind of waste his life with so much talent and stuff. I'm opposed to marijuana. I can say honestly, I've never tried it. Thankfully, it just never appealed to me. There is, I cited earlier, there is some usage for some medical side, and I don't have a problem with it. Let the medical dispensaries deal with that. But I do not want a place, a lounge, for people to go in and smoke and then come out into our streets. And just a couple, there's an incredible Facebook page. It's called Parents Against Pots. You need to go on there. You need to start reading. You need to do some research there. And not just one story, you know, a young boy who ended up dying, you know, marijuana was a drug he was told would not hurt him, yet it affected his ability and even his desire to solve problems and make good decisions. That's my brother right there. Then what happened is then he became resistant to it, and then he started lacing it with synthetic drugs, and then he went into harder drugs. That's what I see. There's a story cited here in Dallas. A man asked the passengers to stop smoking weed on a train. They viciously attacked him. That's the other thing I've been reading a lot is the connection between marijuana and psychosis. And even some people, there was a one story I was reading, Mrs. Trudeau, our former Canadian Prime Minister's wife, said, you know, when she finally quit using medical marijuana on behalf of, because of her mental health issues, she improved. So the state has voted. Decision's been made as far as it being legal and what it is. But in the city of Ketchikan, do not open the door for a lounge, please.
Thanks, Anne. Any questions for Anne? Thank you very much. Hey, that's the last person that signed up to speak to the council. Is there anybody else here I'd like to address the council tonight? Anybody else?
Yep.
Somebody?
I'm going to try to make this quick. I was going to address a few things tonight. Really, I didn't realize there would be as many inquiring minds at why I wasn't running this year, and I've gotten an awful lot of questions lately. So I just publicly say that I spent a lot of time this last winter supporting Julie in a battle against cancer and stuff. And so things have just kind of changed for me this year. I don't know. Maybe I'd run again sometime in the future. But for right now, I just got some other goals. I want to just kind of focus on family stuff and stuff like that. So that's really just the reason, you know. It bothers me a little that I'm not running. I don't like to start something and not even put it on hold. So that's going to be, it'll make me a bigger and better person just by waiting around and holding things. Anyway, I'm going to touch really briefly on the marijuana thing. Like, really briefly. The only thing I'm thinking is like, why are we sending a letter of recommendation? And that's the angle I'm looking at. I'm not going to get on one side or the other. This division between the forty-six and fifty-two or whatever is always really contentious. I mean, you know you're sticking your nose right back in the bee's nest. And I just wonder what, maybe we should evaluate on what we stand to gain because it's a bigger issue than do we want somewhere for people to smoke or not? There's a reason why Colorado doesn't have it. Washington doesn't have it. It comes from a business end. If you look at the business end of that structure, there's no money in it. And that's why you haven't seen big places lobby for it, and people put money into it and fight for it. And it hasn't really happened in those states because of that very reason. The money's already kind of out of it. Once you sell that product, you only start adding more and more cost. By the time you add infrastructure and you start talking about whatever kind of insurance policy is going to cover you against that kind of stuff, and employees and all the other things, when you add all of that other stuff in there, the price just keeps going up and up and up. And it's already difficult for these businesses to compete at the tax rates and the things that they have and the high costs of doing business. So you might send in your letter of recommendation to fight for all this stuff, and then it may just not happen at all anyway. It doesn't work out tax-wise for a retail place to sell anything other than marijuana. And that's, they can't sell all those other goods because of the 208E. And if you talk to a good accountant and he's advised you on what kind of stuff you should be selling and how you should manage your money inside of a weed store, he'll tell you, don't sell anything except weed product because everything else doesn't fit in the right tax structure to write it off. So when you start adding all those other costs, they become really big drag on your business. So my guess is, even if the state said, yeah, we can have it, it'll be a really tough bird to get off the ground. So evaluate whether you want to put the resources, the time and energy into a letter of recommendation that you're going to fight half a town over that's probably not going to have much punch at all. I mean, you guys here in this room aren't going to have a whole lot of weight at what's going to happen in that state. And so to, like, you know, spend meetings and meetings, riling everybody up in town, kind of, how big is this problem? I think we got one ticket we wrote, and it's like to a local person, you know? The problem isn't that big on the streets. When I saw Councilmember Isom's post in there, I want to make sure that we don't spread misinformation. And so I saw the post, then I saw it in the paper, and it was kind of like this headline. The guy in the weed store said, I hear this question a thousand times a day. That's not accurate. That's not accurate information. And once it went into the paper, it wasn't accurate information. Let's public believe that there's a thousand people a day going in there and getting weed. That's not true. My guess is probably less than fifty. So think about, you know, how much energy are we putting toward this thing? If it was me, I'd put a little more energy into the Uber thing because that sounds like that's turning into controversial stuff. So we'll move right off of weed and move on to Uber. I'm more excited about the Uber thing. I'm actually way more excited. Why I'm excited, I think that's some answers to the question. Here's the thing, guys. Second biggest question I got in my store next to where can I get some weed is, do you have Uber? And it happened overnight. It went for last summer. Probably never heard that once. This summer, everybody wants, can I get an Uber? So the rest of the world is poised for Uber. We can keep turning a blind eye to changing with the times. That's what's got us living in a really expensive, exclusive little place where it's difficult to do business. We've got to start changing. The market's going to decide what works. What I hear out here is I heard an awful lot of people say, you know what? I can handle paying a little less for my transportation costs. I hear the public saying that. The only people that I hear complaining about Uber are the industry people that are going to have to change. They've got to change. Why? Because the world's changing. We can't sit up here, you guys can't sit up here and keep protecting the cab industry for forty more years. We've been doing that, and that's why you had such a difficult time trying to get some disabled cabs. Nobody's going to step up to it. I bet this is the answer. Keith at Sale or anybody for that matter could get a disabled cab. We don't have to have the city provide them to a private business and get into all that messy kind of stuff. We can let some other private business provide one of those and lease it out to a driver. I looked at the driver regulations for Uber. They're way more difficult than ours. You can't have any kind of fraction at all. They wouldn't let me behind a wheel ever, you know? I couldn't even believe it. I thought, wow, talking about, you know, bringing up the bar a little bit. You got people who are going to take care of their own cars. They're going to do their own thing. Is it going to affect the cab business? Hell, yeah. Hell, yeah. So Amazon is affecting my sales. You guys going to protect me? Are we going to be able to tax Amazon member Isom? Can we get Amazon? Because we got, you know, we're doing the same thing. We're protecting a business for another business because the industry's changing. That's what's happening every day. What about Airbnb? How many people out there renting their stuff out on Airbnb? So when you go from Uber, we outlaw Airbnb. Pretty soon, we'll just live in our own little vacuum. We won't progress. We won't, we won't divers. We won't, we'll be in the most expensive place in the wide world. Maybe people will come see us for that reason. I don't know. But it's about change, and it's about time for change. I all of a sudden hear that cab guy saying, you know what? We're going to, we're trying to get dispatchers now. I've been screaming about that since I was a cab driver twenty years ago. And we're in a day and age where texting and driving is killing people, right? We're talking, we're talking about the weed. What about the cab drivers that are taking in calls? Oh, you want a taxi? And they're, and they're writing it down, and they're, hey, you gotta run over here to the tow truck. You know, all this is going on for that guy in the seat. And you know what? It never became important to these guys till when? Till Uber came. All of a sudden Uber came, you know what? We're making some changes. Hey, we'll take those disabled cabs now, guys. And you know what? We're gonna try to get a little safer out. It's working right now. You're gonna elevate the level of services for the people here. And you should just sit back and allow that to happen. You really don't have to stick your nose in it and do anything. Nobody's asked you to ban Uber, except the guys who are afraid to change. Yep, it's gonna change tourism a little bit. There's gonna be an outlet out there for people to take a little cheaper tour. I get all kinds of people in that store. There's cheap people, there's people with money. There's different kinds of people. We need to serve them all. We don't just need to say, hey, we got really expensive cabs over there. Let's protect our profits, let's not do anything else. Let's, let's diversify. Let's get a couple of options out there. This is our answer to a whole lot of stuff. It's exciting. And Amazon's coming, there's probably not anything we're gonna do about that. I'm a retail guy. What am I gonna do? Am I gonna come cry to you guys? Oh, man, Amazon's taking my sales, man. They're selling them e-cigs online. I can't do it. You guys gotta tax them. You gotta do something. Nobody's gonna do nothing for me. What am I gonna do? I'm gonna diversify. I'm gonna start teaching my guys how to sell online. I'm gonna start doing it from here. Because we've got, we can do the same thing that they're playing the same games out there, but we have to change right now or we're gonna get run over by the bus. If the cab drivers and cab companies are gonna get run over by Uber, I suggest they speed it up, get more efficient, and knock it out, man. That's what competition's all about. All you guys gotta do on probably marijuana and Uber, just relax. If you put it out for a vote, I could tell you what the public's gonna say. They're gonna want that Uber. It's coming. Anyway, got any questions?
Nope.
Have a great night.
Anybody else wanna address council before we move into our business? See ya, none? Well, Julie, see you later. All right, let's go down to our business. We have a motion to consent.
Did you move the consent?
Oh, yeah, let's, okay, we added six. A six is the Civic Center rental for FEMA. Then I have seven two, seven four, seven, um...
Seven.
Seven and seven eight. I guess I should color those in. Well, why don't we put on consent, then we'll bring it up and vote it separately.
Yeah, or I move to consent.
Voted second is pending for community designers.
Approval of minutes of regular city council meeting of July twentieth, two thousand seventeen. Budget transfers for replacement of the Port and Harbors Department's small maintenance boat outboard engine. Budget transfer of police department's conflict resolution and team building training workshops. Resolution number seventeen twenty-six fifty-eight appointing the election workers for the regular municipal election to be held on October third, two thousand seventeen, and approving the members of campus board. Certificate of public convenience and necessity, Sourdough Ingersoll Incorporated DBA, or, and Southeast Lascahka. Sorry about that. Budget transfers for the sales, marketing, and customer service division overtime report for the quarter ended June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Exempting the procurement of annual maintenance services for the IPTV middleware system from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. That's with Minerva Networks. Ordinance number seventeen eighteen forty-eight adopting new subsection D three to Ketchikan Municipal Code, section three point one two point oh seven oh, entitled sale or other disposition disposition of personal property or interest therein. That's in first reading. Select alder tree removal adjacent to Creek Street boardwalk. Resolution number seventeen twenty-six seventy-two amending the two thousand general government operating capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the library department, the fire department, and the public works department's street division. Budget transfer for the fire department operations division, maintenance needs, and a request authorizing the preuse of the tip for Civic Center for Federal Emergency Management Agency flood risk open house.
All right, any questions on any of them other than the FEMA one? You bet.
Just a point of order, when I vote on the consent agenda, my vote will be an abstention on the Sourdough Ingersoll.
Okay, just, I think we had enough to consent, so just abstain from the whole thing. Okay, let's call the roll on everything but the Civic Center.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
I'm staying.
Zingy?
Yes.
And Kuz?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six with one abstention. That brings us to the Civic Center. FEMA one, we already have a motion on the thing. It's the approval to give them free access up there instead of charging them the five hundred and forty. Dave, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't necessarily oppose this. I'm curious, how often do we allow free use facility for other governmental organizations?
We've done it periodically. I can't give you a specific number of intervals or interval of time, but it has been done.
Anybody else? Thanks, Dave, call the roll.
Yeah.
Isom?
No.
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
And Kuz?
Yes.
And that passes five to two. That brings us over to unfinished business. And that's the, there we have it. Resolution seventeen twenty-six seventy, requesting the Alaska Marijuana Control Board adopt regulations allowing onsite consumption of marijuana or approving designated areas of onsite consumption license retail establishments. And this has been deferred. It's a resolution we'd be sending up to the state, in support or not? And do we have a motion already on the floor?
No, we do not.
Can we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Julie.
For discussion, I'd like to move that the city council adopt resolution number seventeen dash twenty-six seventy. It's revised requesting the State of Alaska Marijuana Control Board to adopt regulations allowing for onsite consumption of marijuana or approving designated areas for onsite consumption in licensed retail marijuana establishments and establishing for an effective date.
Do we have a second? Going once? Going twice? We have no motion, there's no second. Thank you, Julie. That brings us to new business. Seven A one, change order fourteen to contract thirteen thirty-eight A, construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center expansion project, Leighton Dawson joint venture construction. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Honored, I move the city council authorize the city manager into the change order number fourteen to contract number thirteen thirty-eight A, construction services to Ketchikan Medical Center expansion project between the City of Ketchikan and Leighton Dawson. Joint venture instructors in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and four bringing the total contract cost of fifty-two million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents, and approved funding from the Ketchikan Medical Center expansion capital account.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob, do you wanna say anything?
You know, I called Public Works and talked to them about the different items in the change order because I was concerned about some of the costs, such as having to update the present hospital's firearm system and things like that. And after the discussion with Mr. Hilson, I was satisfied with the work that we've been doing. There's some still big outstanding things out there, and I'd like to see this thing come to a close at some point, I'm sure as everybody would.
We're getting closer. Dick?
Yeah, I had a question on one of the items, and it's the one, it's added cost due to delays in starting phase two. It's fifty-six grand, which is, what, twenty percent of the whole thing? And I don't, somebody's dipping in somewhere for me. Is there a justification for the delay?
Well, the delay was at our request relative to Peace Health not wanting to occupy the new surgery suites until that additional work was done. So, the contractor was delayed while that set of modifications were undertaken. Their cost escalated, and now they're asking us to pick that up.
So, Peace Health wants to pay it?
I have not had that discussion with Peace Health. If the council directs me to do that, I certainly will.
We did it at their request, so, yeah. Anyway, that's just my comment.
Okay, anybody else? Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
That passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to seven eight three, budget transfer at Tongas Historical Museum exterior signage. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Honored.
Go ahead.
I move the city council authorize the city manager to transfer thirteen thousand, three hundred from the appropriated reserves to the Public Works Sales Tax Fund to the museum department, two thousand and seventeen, Tongas Historical Museum exterior signage capital account. Second.
Moved and seconded. I have a question. Car, I looked at the sign, which is very nice. The only thing, you know, that background where the Tongas Historical Museum is, is dark to black. Could we see what that looks like if council approves to go ahead with this? Like in white, so it could be read easier from a distance?
I'm gonna defer to the museum director. I think we can accommodate that.
Just to see what, I mean, it's, people are standing at that intersection where I'm at on dock and bought and asked me where the museum is. And I really want them to be able to see a sign from a distance to know where they're going.
I need a Maxwell museum director. First time I got to say that, so thank you. Absolutely. The only thing that would change any of the costs at this point is if we change the, if we make it bigger. So, yes, we can actually change a little bit design. We have a couple of other issues of making some of the, some of the perspective on it a little different as well, just for better readability from across the parking lot.
Perfect. Thank, oh, Dave has a question. And we got a couple others.
This, this, this may sound facetious, but, you know, I'm still waiting for the about fourteen-foot neon sign saying bathrooms, 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 bathrooms.
They just know that already.
No, they don't.
They do.
No, they do not. They come to our store all the time saying, where's a bathroom? Where's a bathroom? Where's a bathroom?
There we go, we'll get the big neon sign that pronounces it.
There you go, bathrooms, bathrooms.
Generally.
Just speaking to you wanting a sign where they can see it. Is it possible, just out of curiosity, where we could actually put it up on the roof higher? Where it's maybe even angled? So, with bathrooms.
I believe there is some concern as far as taking it up higher makes it a little more susceptible to wind shear. So, I'm trying to protect it a little bit with that answer.
We actually have rules against roof signage for that very reason, because people were pretty like, you know, jewelry.
I was just thinking, big blinking, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Hey, Dick in there, Bob?
My comment's probably the same as Lou's. I think the color blends way too much. We need some brighter colors in there to let it show up. Otherwise, it looks good to me.
Bob?
Well, first of all, I think that you don't wanna get it too bright, because you are in a historical district. But has all this stuff gone through the borough's sign ordinances?
Not yet. The designer took that all into consideration when she was creating it. But we have not talked to the borough yet, so that would be the next step.
Yeah, so before we spend any money, we wanna make sure that meets its own goals.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anybody other questions? Thank you, Nina. All right, call the roll, please.
Dave?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to seven eight five, ordinance seventeen eighteen fifty-five, transportation network companies prohibited, first reading. Do we have a motion? This is the one that put on the election ballot.
Is this the ordinance?
This is to put it on the ballot?
Yes.
For people to vote one way or the other.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council approve, approve in first reading ordinance seventeen dash eighteen fifty-five, adding a new section five point four zero point three oh five to the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Transportation Network Companies Prohibited Conditioned Upon Voter Ratification and establishing an effective date.
Moved and seconded. Julie, you wanna say anything?
Yeah, I've been going back and forth with this, and, you know, I did take the time to speak to some of the drivers, or one of the drivers, the Uber drivers. Getting through to Uber itself is pretty impossible, actually. But when I started in on this, I thought, you know, I didn't think it was a good idea, but now I'm not so sure that I think it's a bad idea. I think people had some good points. Competition doesn't hurt. But I'm interested to see what other people have to, what they say, what they have to say about it.
Well, my only thing is, you know, we're talking about, Spencer brought up Amazon and everything. You know, my thing is, they're gonna do business, they gotta pay sales tax, you know? Amazon and all these guys don't pay taxes. They, and, great, I have no problem with their business, but, you know, then everybody else in town here who's readjusting in their business practices has to pay for everything that we're losing, so. I am such a proponent of everybody paying their fair share. And I know the federal government is now looking at, you know, a federal tax on online stuff and looking at giving the stuff back to the state, which I hope we give back to the communities, but I doubt if we'll get that far. But I say it in the nicest way. So, I don't mind, I don't have a problem putting it up to the community to see what they want. But my concern is, and I, even, you know, with Uber here in town or Lyft, they do, I mean, my aim is always gonna be to make sure we're getting our taxes for it. Everybody else is paying it that's doing business here. I think that needs to be done. Anybody else? Dick?
Go, go, go ahead.
I totally pointed to you. I'll go.
I'll speak for my brother, but I'm not gonna speak. I'm shy, I know what he would say about this. I guess the whole frustrating part about the process, it actually, actually, the only, the only thing we actually can do is put up a vote. And I suspect we all know that, but it's gonna turn out. I'd be real surprised if the majority of people didn't say, sure, bring them in. What we're still faced with is the point Mayor Williams brought up, is that we don't really have any mechanism to make sure they're paying their sales taxes. And we, and since it's a new industry, we don't even have the ability to be able to guess they're not paying. At least with the jewelry stores a few years ago, we had twenty-five years of experience saying, well, they're probably not paying, they're probably not paying, and we're gonna look at this. It's the Wild West. And it's very frustrating, because that's, that was the intention. That was the entire intention of Uber when they went, when they basically set up a system in the state that we wouldn't have any local control or any local. And that's very frustrating. Do I, do I think competition is a bad thing? Not necessarily, you know? I think, I think it can be a good thing. And I also have concerns, though, about, you know, what's it gonna be like on the docks? Right now, we're, things are pretty, pretty restricted about who can or can't go down there. Are we gonna say, fine, you can all go down there? Then what is, then what is, what do the feds think about that? Where do we put them all? Where do we, how do we deal with that? And, yeah, it will hurt the independent tour operators. 'Cause someone will say, gee, I need a ride to Herring Cove, and now I need to ride back. I guess I don't have any problem with putting it to the public vote. Actually, I don't have a problem with it, I just, I just, I think it's almost kind of a waste of time, 'cause you know, we know how that's gonna turn out.
Next, Dick?
Yeah, I, I think we oughta just go and let the public decide. And I, too, like Lou, I'm worried about the sales tax. If you're gonna do business in town, you need to be paying your sales tax. You know, we knock Amazon and all those places, but, you know, I have a suspicion most people buy somewhere else because that's, it's not available in town. And, and, uh, at some point in time, either the state or the federal government's going to deal with that, because it's a big tax issue, and then we'll get the cut we need. If it was developing the thirty or forty of them and they're wanting on the dock, I don't think there's any way Port and Harbors can afford to put them on the dock with maybe having a ride. Or even if they've called for a ride, that's down there for people that have already got a pre-booked or something down there that the dock vendors are selling, so I think we'd have to have some severe restrictions. And then even off the dock, if it got to be a problem, I don't know what you'd do with them. I think Steve McDonald's right there. It, it, it would be a challenge if it built up to what somebody thinks it might, so I think we'll let the public cho- decide for us, and then we'll live with it.
Judy then generally.
Well, I mean, and, and I worry about that, too. I mean, where, right now, you know, I know at the mall, cabs pull in there and wait for different rides. How is that going to work with Uber? Are we going to have a bunch of people filling in parking spots downtown, waiting for rides? I mean, I, I do see there's going to be some issues with this, but I agree with Dave. I think that it's going to pass. I think we should be focusing on how it's, how we can make this work for us. I mean, it's here, people want it. I think what we need to do is focus on how to make this work effectively for us.
General Lee?
Um, just speaking from being out of, and actually using an Uber and a Lyft, I mean, in the cities, they're great, but, um, I agree with everybody when it comes to here in town, and we all, I, I agree with Dave. It, it's a hands-down deal right there. People are going to want it. And, but how do we?
I'm just not sure we can manage it.
Yeah, I don't know if we, yeah, I don't think we can manage it, because it goes through a corporation who holds on to everything, and it gets fed out through a PayPal system. I, um, because you set up your account, I have the app, I can order an Uber. I don't know if they can get here, but (laugh) you might try. But, um, from an aspect of when I was in New York, being disabled, being able to order an Uber to my address without having to call anybody, or it was awesome. And, um, I have to admit, after not being in New York for a good ten, fifteen years, um, from taking cabs, even though most of the cabs are wonderful, they were ten times better because they had that competition. The pricing was very equal to the Ubers by the time when I actually priced it out, when I couldn't get an Uber and ended up getting a cab, the price was the same, but the service was even, it was comparable. They weren't yelling at me because I had to sit in the front of the cab, because I can't sit in the back of the car, so, um, they were very, um, accommodated, accommodating compared to fifteen years prior to ordering.
Well, my concern is, um, you know, knowing the cab business, you know, there's not going to be a lot of Uber drivers from September to April.
No.
What is it going to be? It's going to be Uber drivers doing tours, and that's just like Juneau's concern, too, is the same thing, and, um, so we're starting a new tour business, and that's my big concern, so. All right, anybody else? This is a motion to send it to a ballot or not. Call the roll.
Kiper?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
I'm staying.
Gage?
Sure.
Okay, that passes six to one with one extension. That brings us down to, oh, vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News, one thousand. Did I miss six?
Six.
Oh, yes, six, an agreement, agreement regarding, um, council member participation on Ketchikan Medical Center Community Board. Let me get there. General Lee, is this yours?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I suppose. I move the city council approve the agreement regarding city council member participation in the Ketchikan Medical Center Community Health Board. Second.
Moved in second. Did you have anything, General Lee?
Um, well, Mitch went over all the paperwork, and I feel bad because I didn't get back to him on it, because I was out of town, so, but it looked all right to me. I don't know how anyone else feels about it.
Dave?
Oh. I, yeah, I, I read that, and I say, why are we bothering?
Right.
Exactly.
I mean, frankly, I, 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 considering the, uh, how do I put this nicely? Considering the, uh, effort the community has gone to over the decades to work cooperatively, we have a relationship with, with Little Sisters of St. Joseph and going back before that, and even Peace Health. There's just something about this that strikes me as the biggest freaking slap in the face. And it doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy about our relationship with Peace Health. This sounds like a lawyer threw this at us and just said, take it or leave it. And I guess I, it doesn't matter to me if we have a person on their board anymore, because it just, I'm sorry, that, that's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it.
Mark?
I agree with Dave. That's essentially, he's absolutely correct. Doesn't matter. Let's see, so we'd be a non-voting member that the hospital could vote to remove if they deem fit, that would be excluded from executive session. Why would we, why, but, but, but the community was amply informed to bond this hospital expansion, but we can't be a participant.
Right.
So, why would anybody want to go to that meeting to not vote, to sit in the atrium while they have an executive session, wondering if they're voting to remove you anyway? It's, it's.
It's a.
Oh, we know that's going to happen.
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty toothless and gives us no representation at all.
Dave?
Well, just, and just to add, add that, um, and, and, and once again, the whole idea in the past of having a person on that board was they would be able to bring information back to us. It doesn't look like we're going to be able to bring squat back, because they'll just say, well, that's proprietary.
Right.
And, and, yeah, I get, you know, patient confidentiality. That's not what we're talking about.
Talking about HIPAA stuff.
We're, 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 we're talking, we're talking about, you know, financial stuff, and so I guess, once again, why are we there? If, if, if.
Dick?
Well, I don't need to echo what's been said, but I agree with every bit of it, and, you know, if, if you listen around town to a lot of different people that go to that hospital, they aren't real happy. And we're not getting any input back into it, and they don't get much satisfaction as to what's going on, how they get billed, how they get treated, and everything else, and that's why people go out of town to get medical help. And the community puts fifty-six million dollars into that thing to make it right. So, just honestly, maybe we need a new operator, and we'll leave it at that.
General Lee?
I really appreciate that everyone here just echoed the frustration I've had for the last six months. I will say this. Last meeting, I was not here because I was able to get my own appointment at Harborview that I had to instigate, because I could not get a referral. I got, I had checked out my bill, thinking it was going to be a nightmare, um, because I haven't met my deductible in twenty-some-odd years, being that although I'm disabled, I'm fairly healthy, so my two thousand deductible is always me paying out. Um, needless to say, based on what I saw on my health insurance, for my six hours at Harborview, I only owe four hundred dollars, out of about two thousand dollars worth of x-rays, um, a full body scan, which I found out I have arthritis. Thanks, Grandma. Uh, fifty-one, welcome to the world. Um, but, and all that said, again, and I understand HIPAA, I worked in that industry, and, again, this is, um, I feel that they, they don't want anybody, they don't want anyone in their business. They don't want the community to know their business, and the community has voiced time and time again to me that they don't get treated respectfully. I have had clients or people say that they've gone to the ER who are ha- um, OD. They've been sent to the ER because they tried to come down from the drugs they've been using for the very reas- for their own reasons, and they were sent there because now they, they need help, because they sh- they can't just come off of it cold turkey. And they have been eyeballed, um, treated but poorly, um, basically ignored, asked, why the hell are you here again? And I, I think it's time for a new venue, too, because how many times do you got to get sent to collections before you get a bill? I mean, how many of us, if, in this room, if you, if everybody raised their hand, how many times have you gone to the doctors, not gotten a bill, and been sent to collections?
Yep.
Thank you.
Judy?
Um, so, I, I mean, I agree with everybody. When I was running, what, four years ago now, um, that's when they were doing the bond, and everybody was going around, and I, of course, went around Kenton, just seemed to be everywhere I was, and, boy, they cared a lot. I mean, they wanted to hear every sad story, and they were going to work on it, and work on it, and work on it, and I've seen nothing. As a matter of fact, it, it's gotten worse. The billing is worse, more people are going out of town. I mean, we build this huge facility, and we went to people and said, you know, please vote for that bond, and now there's even more people going out of town. I think we should seriously take a look at that contract, have Mitch take a look at that contract, and just see what the, is there anything we can do?
Mitch, can you come up a minute? Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to, you know, I, I sat on that board, and it was frustrating. Uh, for a period of time, I was allowed in executive sessions until I read the rules and said I wasn't. But that was okay. The thing is, as a city of Ketchikan, I don't want to run a hospital. I want to be the landlord, and that's what our duties rely on, so maybe it's not as important as for us to be on that board.
I mean, it's.
Um, it hopefully would give us the avenue, if we have problems, that we can address it with them, but realistically, we should focus on being the landlord and, and, uh, look at the contracts in regards to the fair value of the services that, um, or the payments that we're getting on it and the input that we have, and, uh, try to balance that out in the future.
I think we pay, they pay us a dollar a?
A dollar a month.
A year.
A year.
Now, understanding, understanding that any, any costs that's associated with leases and rents would probably be passed on through the, um, the charges in a hospital, I mean, so, uh, I think it's, the council's, uh, past intent is to try to keep that cost down, and whether that's been successful or not, I'm not entirely sure. How do you equate that, or how do you quantify that? Uh, but we're the landlords.
Mitch, where are we on that contract, the ten-year contract?
Uh, that I don't know.
Okay.
What, uh, what I felt I should share with, with the, uh, council is, is how this came about, at least from, from my point of view, which was, um, I think late, late in the spring, council member Gage, uh, informed me that Peace Health, people wanted to have a little meeting with her and talk about her participation. Uh, and that, apparently, their attorney was coming up as well, and just wanted, uh, to let me know that. It sounded like it was going to be pretty much of a, of a, of a chat, and I didn't know that. I said, well, gee, if I had the time, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not certain how crucial that meeting is going to be. Shortly after that, she was presented with, um, a confidentiality agreement, uh, which I looked that over, and that led, and it, it was basically fine, understood it, understood what, what the hospital's concerns were. But for me to wonder, because I had really no idea what this council member representation or any of it was supposed to be, I didn't know what the board was, I couldn't find an ordinance, um, and so it, it might be a little harsh to characterize it, once you get this background that it was crammed on our throat. When I met with, uh, Peace Health, including their attorney and council member, uh, Gage and council member Zingy were there as well, and we talked about a lot of these things in general terms, it inferred to me that it would be useful to have some type of agreement to just set out the basic framework, because there was nothing. Uh, their attorney, Mr. Saxman, Saxton, you know, volunteered to take a first draft at it. Um, I worked on it from there. Uh, just a, a couple of things I would mention is, in paragraph one, you know, when it talks about him objecting or whatnot, I said, you know, that, that gives me a little pause, that could be kind of demeaning. He said, well, we can take it out, but it might be a good idea. Says, I'm on the office boards and stuff, and once in a while, you get somebody that just isn't working out, and I said, well, you know, I'll leave it in, and I circulated it for comments and didn't hear anything else. The main thing, um, I wanted to ensure that was in there, and that's in paragraph two, is the mere fact that someone is on this community health board, which isn't actually the governing board of their corporation, should not be, uh, that in itself should not be a reason that the council member would be precluded from working on or doing anything on behalf of the city in their role as a city council member. In, in, in assuming that, you know, they haven't been, uh, exposed to confidential information via, via the hospital or city. And that's in paragraph number two, paragraph number three, um, the hospital's concerned about confidentiality and things that this board does, um, and expressed a concern about the Public Records Act. I said, well, we can keep them segregated, and if we're asked about it, or there's something that looks like it's getting into that area, we will let you know so you can come in and, and defend it. That's pretty much all there is, you know, I think, of substance. I'm not saying that having a representative or participant in the board is a good idea or a bad idea. I just hope the council should know, uh, how this came about, and how this involvement has been. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mitch. Dave?
Yeah, I want to clarify. I, I didn't say it was random. I said it was a slap across the face. It's too ridiculous.
Thank you.
No, I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
Anybody else before we vote?
Actually, I, I have one thing.
You bet.
That is important. I want to make it real clear that I, that in my comments about the hospital have nothing to do with the almost uniformly fine service that I've gotten from the people who work there. Uh, from the emergency rooms, the doctors, the staff, those are great people. That's not, that's not who I, I want, and why I'm thinking that I'm running them down, because those folks are great. They've helped me and my family members numerous, numerous times. They're good, they're jobs, they're, I, I have all respect to both of them. Peace Health, on the other hand, though, corporate Peace Health, I have different people to talk to.
I think we're all in that frame of mind. Right, General Lee?
Yeah, the same. That, a lot of the staff are great. Um, but I will also say that they've outsourced their, um, their labs now. It's now outsourced, so there's no, those, and, those five employees are gone. Um, and, of course, billing and others have all been outsourced, so the people that used to have those jobs here are gone. And it's obviously not working for them.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Kuse?
No.
Zingy?
No.
Flora?
No.
Gage?
No.
Kiper?
No.
Isom?
No.
Seaberton?
No.
Yeah, that's resounding. Um, seven to nothing against that. Um, now, you guys still want to have a participant on the, go to the meetings?
For what?
All right, never mind. I mean, I just need a direction, because I'm supposed to plan.
Yep.
You don't have to worry about it.
I'm sure I was booked.
Bob?
You can always appoint one. There might be a come of time as a landlord that we may want to have discussions, even if it's in the open forum, and they would be the representative of the city. I know that the borough has the same option. They, I don't think they ever send anybody.
Roger.
If I could just make a clarification. I think I understand, but, I mean, as I said, there's no ordinance having anything to do with this. Um, when I speak with Mr. Saxton, it's my understanding that the will of council at this point is that we just won't be having a participant.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Vouchers. Daily News, one thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Thank you.
I move for approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News, the amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents.
Second. Moved in second. Call the roll.
Second.
Uh, Seaberton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to managers' report. Carl?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to alert the council that probably beginning in the second meeting in August, uh, things are really starting to, um, kind of coalesce, and there's a lot headed your way.
Oh, boy.
Great.
Well, it's been a wonderful summer.
We got that week, is it?
We're probably going to be requesting a couple of special meetings, because there's some big-ticket items that, uh, probably aren't appropriate for a regular business meeting that you're going to want to consider at length.
We'll be prepared.
Just want to give you a heads up that they're coming, so.
Thanks.
Anything else, Carl?
No, that's all.
Anybody have any questions on the manager's report? City Clerk's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda, oh, Attorney's file?
Uh, Your Honor.
Future agenda items? Very none. Mayor and council comments. Dick?
Welcome to the sunshine.
Judy?
Uh, nothing.
General Lee?
No, I'm good.
Julie?
Yes. A few inaccuracies out of the public comments, and I just, I really appreciate anyone who's willing to come forward and speak in front of us, but it was said that we have rejected indoor smoking. We, as Ketchikan, have not rejected indoor smoking. It was also said that diamond stores run drugs in the box scene. I, that's the first time I've ever heard that, and I didn't like someone slamming a local business.
I was going to bring that in.
Which, although they're here temporarily, they're still a local business. It was also said that we don't endorse a resolution. In no way was that resolution tonight endorsing anything. It was a promotion to tell the state that we would like. state that we would like to see them move forward, so, but it's a dead issue now. It was also said that the Stony Moose is running an illegal business, and they're not. And it was also said that somebody, Spencer questioned my accuracy in restating that a gentleman downtown gets asked 1,000 times. I actually cut that in half. He said he gets asked 2,000 times. When there's cruise ships in that have, and we have 8,000 to 10,000 extra people walking around downtown, he says he gets asked on a daily basis 2,000 times, where can I smoke this stuff, where can I use it? And Spencer proceeded to tell me that I was wrong, which, talk to the guy, if he lied to me, who knows? But just a few inaccuracies in the public comment. I wanna thank Ann for bringing up, which I'm gonna go there, parents against pot, so thank you for bringing that to light, and the personal story. And that's all.
Julie, thank you. Good points. Bob?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Dave?
You know, I had this wonderful whole speech wrote, it all lined up for what I was gonna say about that issue, and then of course it died, so, oh, well.
Save it for next time.
You know, it's gonna come up again, it will.
Mark?
The hospital board representation, as presented and resoundingly rejected, seems to me that perhaps Peace Health got exactly what they wanted, which is no participation from the city, so, pretty clever. I would suggest, given the number of comments that we receive as council members from residents that have been voiced at this table, I think it'd be a really great idea if maybe some of those folks gave up a part of their evening, got down here and stood right there and maybe explained what's going on a little bit. I think it's probably about time. The city stepped up and bonded this hospital, the results of which don't seem to be going over very well to a lot of us. Maybe they'd like to come down and speak to it. It's just an invitation.
Very good. I'll pass it on, I'm gonna be at the hospital tomorrow, tomorrow. They're all wonderful people, and they did a great job. And they have needles. But I think the hospital would solve 99.9% of their problems if they would organize their billing system, you know? I'm not saying that the Daily News has a great billing system, I get blamed. But they've been promising to work on it forever and ever, and it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to be changing, so that would be something we can pass on to the, maybe through Carl in a letter to them, that they could come talk to us about what they're doing and how they're doing it, because we get the, you know, they come to us and complain, because they know we own the hospital building. They don't, I don't know how much, they probably complained to the hospital too, but it needs to be dealt with, and a lot of this problem would go away. You know, I got, you know, talking about billing and going to closure, but my wife got her bill from a year ago, and she got the bill a year la, I mean, she went to the doctor and got it a year later. I mean, it's, it's amazing, I, I don't know if it's an insurance thing or what, but, you know, there's some things they could do to help their own cause with the perception with the community here. And that needs, I mean, they keep saying they're going to address it, and they, they should address it to help their business. I mean, we put a great facility out there, and I've been dealing with a lot of parts of it unfortunately, and they're all really happy with it, they're bringing in, you know, I was talking to Dr. Rice last week, they're bringing in new people to utilize that surgery and everything, and they're really excited, and they love what we provided for them. But there is a problem there between the patient and the hospital, and it, I think it all centers around the billing situation, so, that's my only two cents. Anybody wanna adjourn?
Someone moved.
Thank you, everybody, great meeting.
Bob?